Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take a few moments of silence. Thank you. Twenty eight, twenty six, twenty two. There we go. All right, now I've got the, we have sound, now I've got the meeting back. We will, we will get started. Can we get roll call?
Ms. Alt.
Here.
Mr. Bodkins.
Here.
Ms. Durbin.
Here.
Dr. Felner.
Here.
Mr. Richard.
Here.
Ms. Ziger.
Here.
Very good, thank you. And the elected officials.
Mayor Larry.
Here.
Auditor Satterfield.
Here.
Director of Law Palmer.
Here.
Treasurer Sparks.
Here.
Safety Service Director Ward.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to the minutes from April 12th.
I thought we had to make an excuse for Aaron Cogan deal.
No.
That's correct.
Could I, motion to speak to the President, unless anybody has a question, I can make a motion to approve the minutes from our April 12th meeting. All right, motion to report to this time, Mr. Richard. Ms. Ziger. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, moving on to the agenda. Are there any additions? Looks like there are. There is one addition.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to add ordinance 2022-38 to the agenda.
All right, thank you, Mr. Felner, seconded by Ms. Bodkins. All right, roll call.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Bodkins.
Yes.
Ms. Durbin.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Ms. Ziger.
Yes.
All right. Motion carried. Agenda's been amended.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
All right, thank you, Mr. Richard.
I'll second.
Go ahead. Seconded by Ms. Ziger. All right, roll call?
No.
Oh, all in favor, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I don't have any, I don't have any notes for citizens addressing council, so we can move on to legislation.
All right. First one.
Ordinance number 2022-17.
All right, ordinance number 2022-17 entitled ordinance authorizing the safety service director to execute any and all documents to transfer property to the Galleon Port Authority and declaring emergency.
Thank you, do we have a discussion? Mr. Felner.
We have heard from Mr. Palmer. This is in reference to property on Market Street, correct?
South Market.
South Market, yes. For which there is a, an interested manufacturer wanting to build on that, and the property is going to be transferred from the city to the Port Authority. I know that it was held to a first reading last time. You know, I'll direct a question in. Ms. Durbin, if she has any questions to remain there, because I think it's a good thing for the city, especially if there's a tenant ready on there.
Well, where is this? Is it on South Market?
Yes.
Oh, is it on a corner or something, or?
It's where, by Eagle Crusher down, it was, it was an industrial site, and it's been, it's a big giant concrete pad for years.
There's no building on it?
No.
No building, okay.
It's like if you're going down South Market and you turn left, you see that railroad track there, it's like that really big concrete.
Yeah, no.
Well, excuse me, was that the property they were just interested in one section, garbage purging avenue, basically their back, not the whole property.
Okay. So the whole property is going to be transferred to the Port Authority?
Yes, I understand.
Okay. Mayor, you have?
No, I think that's exactly right. I think it's, it fell to us through tax foreclosure. We do have some money in it from a phase one, phase, phase one and two brownfield assessment. Turns out, I think Doc would remember some of the other council members, that that was perhaps seen as converting to residential. The phase two came back, and without a fair amount of soil remediation, it was, it was likely to remain commercial. So it can be used in a commercial or industrial sense. It's the same way it's owned, and so that's the idea. I think to Mr. Bodkins' question, I really, you know the lot real well, it's the other side of the tracks from your business, but it's, it's, I think the property that fronts off of Pershing, excuse me, this is the front, the part that fronts off of Pershing, that off of Parsons, I think there's, there's some small, there's some potential for some small movement of existing industries. That's what I would expect to happen.
One question I have also is, you probably haven't negotiated anything yet with the property. How about the cleanup? Are we responsible for the cleanup or is that what we negotiated with, sell the property or whatever?
I don't know the answer to that. As far as a brownfield, like contaminated cleanup, that, that won't be required. What I expect, though, is that the, those, those monolithic size concrete piers, you know, those will be removed.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Felner.
Yes, I think that, you know, this is an excellent opportunity, and my feeling is that the quicker we transfer it to the port, the better. So I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance 2022-17 and proceed to the final reading.
Motion to suspend the rules, move to final reading by Mr. Felner, seconded by Mr. Bodkins. Roll call.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Bodkins.
Yes.
Ms. Durbin?
No.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Ziger?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Right, that is five one, so it passed.
The motion to suspend.
The motion to suspend the rules passed. Yes, so.
Second reading, the second rule.
The motion.
No, we have to, we still have.
We have the motion to back.
Most of them passed.
Waiting for someone to make a motion.
Right.
And let's, if there's any other discussion, I agree with Dr. Felner, this is a great opportunity to have somebody use that area, that little longer, essentially a big concrete pad out there. So with that, I'd like to make a motion that it passed ordinance 2022-17.
Motion to pass. The ordinance, Mr. Richard, seconded by Mr. Bodkins. Roll call. Discussion. Oh, do we have any discussion?
I just want, I was, when I was being a little bit rude, I apologize. The reason the five one passed, I was kind of confused, is because Mr. Ives resigned, and so there's sufficient number.
It's three quarters of council members.
Right.
So you could do math.
Sleepy old Tom was thinking, well, that was thwarted by one vote, it's not, you know, we only need five.
It's a hundred and fifty seven thirty one seventeen, if you're really, two A, if you really want to know.
Mr. Mike.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, we're about to roll call.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Bodkins.
Yes.
Ms. Durbin.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Ms. Ziger.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
All right, motion carried. All right, we'll move on to ordinance number 2022-29.
Ordinance number 2022-29 entitled ordinance authorizing the safety service director to contract for internet auction services to dispose of unneeded personal property owned by the city of Galleon and declaring an emergency.
Or do we have a discussion?
Yes. Is this, what primarily is in this? Is it office supplies, is it police, different departments, or what's, what's in this that we're going to sell?
Mr. Richard, I have some cheap pieces right back there.
Is it mostly yourself cheap?
I don't know if it's mostly, but that is part of it. We get a lot of forfeited property through court processes, and in the past, we would typically destroy the property, but we saw that it could be beneficial to the citizens and to the city, to the police department specifically, because we could get some revenue from that, which would obviously lessen any monies coming from taxpayers and different things like that, to help fund some, some projects or equipment that we'd be looking at. And then, of course, the citizens benefit, because sometimes they can get pretty good deals on electronics and different things like that. And it helps us keep up with the backlog of evidence that comes into the police department, so.
Will any of the property be on display for citizens to look at?
Not on display, but it is on the internet, so you can go to GovDeals. Yeah, you'll get a description and be able to photograph some of the items that are up for auction.
Okay, and how long will this auction be going on? Is there a time limit?
Mr. Satterfield.
Each, each one of the items is set for a specific time, but this is, this is an ordinance that was passed back in.
Yeah, there's no.
Yeah, 2014, fifteen seventeen.
Seventeen was a lot.
And it's not specifically for the police department, it's for the entire city. There's talk about the line department maybe selling transformers that need to be done, or other street department, what, anything that's out there, and this is kind of the way of the future, which is selling stuff. You're posting it for, for a specific period of time, the buyer has to pay the fee, not the city. So if we sell something for $20, the buyer has to pay a percentage. We, we, the city recovers the $20, and then the GovDeals gets their fee, if you will, from the buyer itself.
And if I'm, and if I'm correct, this particular GovDeals is a more broader buying base, so to speak, as opposed to just simply?
Many government entities utilize this.
Yes, yes, it's, it's, it's not just for, it's, well, Galleon folks can use it, but it's also has the opportunity to be viewed by other entities across the country, I'm assuming.
It's eBay for government auction.
Okay, there you go.
And I, and I will ask that you put an asterisk beside this, because we thought that the 2017 ordinance was still governing this, but it doesn't, because this is an annual thing, so we, this should be a, a January ordinance every year, just to clean that up. And we continue to move on.
In, in section ten two, it says, each item will be shown for at least 10 days, so that's all it says.
Okay. Mr. Richard. Is there any time constraints or on this?
Certainly, if you're not considering yourself property.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to take that as a yes, so.
And specifically for the police department, like I said, with the evidence room, it helps to keep up, so that things aren't constantly outgrowing the size of the room, I guess.
True.
Is this all stuff that has to be picked up, or can some of it, like, is there shipping involved, does someone wants to get some shipped?
No. Yeah, it's all picked up on site.
F O B Galleon.
Yes. And it helps with the manpower, because obviously, if we have an auction, then we have to have somebody there to staff the auction, to keep control of the property, the transference of monies, different things like that, so this pretty much eliminates that, there's one person, for the most part, too, in the police department anyhow, that has any interaction with that.
Mr. President. Since, as has been expressed, the sooner we can get this going, the better off it will be for, you know, to sell the product, or sell the items to the public, and the fact that this is the second reading, I would like to make a motion to move ordinance 2022-29 to the final reading.
Okay. Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Richard, seconded by Ms. Ziger.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Ms. Ziger.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Bodkins.
Yes.
Ms. Durbin.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Motion carried. Mr. Felner.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance 2022-29.
Seconded by Mr. Bodkins. Motion by Mr. Felner, seconded by Mr. Bodkins.
Is there any discussion?
Yep, is there a discussion? Yep, all right.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Bodkins.
Yes.
Ms. Durbin.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Ms. Ziger.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Ken has a little comment here. I didn't realize that Ken and I were so close. We've got Mr. Bodkins and Ms. Bodkins.
Wow, I'll fix that.
Congratulations, you two.
Oh, yes.
I'll follow that again.
I will, I will tell you later.
Please, don't, never mind.
I will fix that, I'm so sorry.
All right, moving on to ordinance 2022-30.
Ordinance number 2022-30 entitled ordinance authorizing the safety service director to enter into an agreement with GPD Group for professional engineering services related to water treatment plant improvements and declaring an emergency.
Any discussion? That's all.
This came through the utilities committee, and we also had the first reading, last council meeting, and this is money appropriated from the American Rescue Plan Act to cover the cost of the engineering for the improvements to the water treatment plant. You'll see here on the, following this actual ordinance, the plan that the company is going to be doing. So they're going to be addressing the issues and working directly with the city to understand the EPA's sanitary survey, and work on that list of deficiencies that are required to be addressed. So this is a good way to kind of get going, and looking at how to fix some of these issues that the EPA has identified as areas of interest. I think that also the mayor had talked about, if we are able to get this passed, that if the project was possible, it would be completed by the end of '23, with some of the work being done in the wintertime because of the lower rates of usage, or being able to shut down certain parts of the plant so that they can be fixed. Maybe better do that during winter months and the summer months. So it seems as though a lot of discussion and thought has gone into this specific group, and also, basically, you have a good idea of what needs to be done in order to make the needed repairs.
Anything else? Carry on. Mr. Felner.
I was only going to say, we've had no questions. I couldn't have done, I wish I could do that well. You really covered it succinctly, hit all the high points. Though we are moving to a new engineering firm, the city's historical firm, in our judgment, didn't do real well. We're still trying to get things ironed out with EPA. I don't want to slough the blame off on them, but they certainly did distinguish themselves. We've built a pretty good relationship with GPD over the last handful of years, and the electrical always at the city in decades, and more recently with GPD on some of our roadway stuff. So when we requested for proposals, we got a handful of proposers, and this is the, this was the firm that we selected.
Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Felner.
Yes, because of the importance of the water plant and upgrades, and, you know, it's a hot topic on the, the internet, I think that it behooves us to try and get moving as quickly as possible. So I'm in favor of making a motion on ordinance 2022-30 to suspend the rules and move to the final reading.
Motion by Dr. Felner.
And I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Richard.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Ms. Ziger.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Bodkins.
Yes.
Ms. Durbin.
Yes.
All right, motion carried. Got further discussion?
Mr. President, for a few other discussions, I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance 2022-30.
Motion by Mr. Richard, seconded by Ms. Alt. Roll call.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Bodkins.
Yes.
Ms. Durbin.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Ms. Ziger.
Yes.
All right, motion carried. Moving on to ordinance number 2022-31.
Ordinance number 2022-31 entitled ordinance amending ordinance number 2021-116 approved on December 28, 2021, which amended ordinance number 2020-92, permanent 2021 appropriations by appropriating and transferring funds in various funds and declaring an emergency.
Do we have any discussion?
If you recall from the last meeting, when I said I didn't know what this was, and I said I did know it is, it's nothing more than cleaning up the, the fund numbers in that, it is not doing anything with finances, nothing with money, nothing. It is cleaning up the ordinance to make the funds that were passed originally correct.
So you look, yeah, so you can like, look after the therefore, that's where the correct numbers are. It's, it's really, if you read it, it's like, well, it's the same stuff. No, it's, there's an account number difference in each one of those, so it's, you got to do it, but it's pretty procedural, so we know.
Mr. Felner.
I would like to help Mr. Satterfield out in his duties by getting this, this done, so I can move on to other important things. And with that said, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move to the final reading on ordinance. ordinance 2022 dash 31.
Dr. Felner, any motion? Second by Ms. Ziegler. Roll call.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Bodkins.
Yes.
Ms. Durbin.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Um, is there any other discussion? Uh, I'd like to, um, make a motion to pass ordinance 2022 dash 31.
Motion passed by Mr. Richard, second by Mr. Bodkins. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Bodkins.
Yes.
Ms. Durbin.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving on to ordinance number 2022 dash 32.
Ordinance number 2022 dash 32, entitled ordinance authorizing the city of Gallion to participate in the 2022 ODOT winter contract for road salt and declaring an emergency.
Discussion.
This is just a annual, I know everybody's wondering each other, um, this is a annual thing, um, that, um, we go in with an agreement and such, um, there's pretty much, it's pretty much cut and dry, um, so unless somebody's got a, another question.
No. We don't make a move on this, the way things are going up, we don't know if that's gonna happen.
It's rather appropriate, since we're due across tonight, too.
Yeah.
Well, and it's, it's kind of, uh, counterintuitive that we start thinking about salt for next year in the spring, but that's what you have to do.
But did we jinx it the rest of the spring, though?
Yeah, you don't wanna, you don't wanna start thinking about that.
Well, having said that.
We're gonna have a holiday for Utah.
Just to piggyback on what Mr. Richard said, there's, uh, it's technically a rescission deadline, but I'm assuming that that also means a participatory deadline of April 29th, this way, in the past.
Yeah, that was the other thing, too, so, um, unless there's any other discussion, I would like to make a motion to, uh, suspend the rules on, uh, ordinance 2022 dash 32, and move it to the final reading.
Motion made by Mr. Richard. Second by Ms. Alt. Roll call.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Bodkins.
Yes.
Ms. Durbin.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler.
Yes.
Right, motion carried. Can I get a motion from this, Dr. Felner?
Yes, um, I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance 2022 dash 32.
Motion by Dr. Felner, second by Mr. Bodkins. Discussion? Roll call.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Bodkins.
Yes.
Ms. Durbin.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving on to ordinance 2022 dash 33.
Ordinance number 2022 dash 33, entitled ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to enter into a partnership agreement between Crawford County and the cities of Gallion and Bucyrus for the, uh, uh, program year 2022 chip grant program and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Dr. Felner.
Yes, this came through finance committee, and I'm just gonna, um, lateral over to the mayor, please, for, there's some.
I'll give you the shortest version, I promise.
Differences this year.
Yeah, once upon a time, before we were, uh, when, since we have been in office many of us, the city was their own, had their own chip grant, since then, they have changed that over, and our housing improvement dollars are available through the county. What this does is agrees that we will work through the county, they've hired the community action, Great Lakes Community Action, used to be WSOS, they're administering that on our behalf. There's a sub-allocation that's set aside for Gallion, so it's, we're, it's not a countywide pre-for-all, but this is how we would execute and access, um, what looks largely to be a, um, homeowner, uh, rehab assistance program. And again, that gets into longer, that looks like the program that will be submitted for funding will largely go to, um, a single-family homeowner assistance.
That's all.
So just to clarify, the, the chip is the community housing impact and preservation grant, and this is a program that can be utilized by citizens of Gallion to do rehab on their homes.
Yes.
Like a private person, maybe with specific income guidelines, could submit an application that they need a new roof, or they need this or that to make their home safe, so this money will allow citizens to make needed repairs in their homes that they may not be otherwise able to afford.
That's right, and it's not, it doesn't do, it, there isn't going to be much money, and the program kind of leans away from improving rental housing. It also is not particularly friendly with rental assistance, and that's another 20 minutes, and we don't, maybe we wanna debate it, we, the city of Gallion participated in the county-wide public meeting on what would be the best use of the funds and matching up where the, where there's a great housing need up with these dollars, but it, the, there is a, a bias toward the, uh, single-family homeowner improvement, so.
So there's a place in Bucyrus that I heard of years ago that does the chip program, so do they still apply through there, or are they applying through that Great Lakes?
The way, the way it works now, that there, I don't believe they have that, company was replaced with Great Lakes. I think the way you access it here is to, is in our office, beyond getting a hold of the Great Lakes group, uh, we have applications up here at the office, we have a, I don't wanna say steady stream, but, um, once this gets passed and the word's out that there's money for the next two years, those people who are familiar with using it will, they'll, in fact, since you asked, uh, when, when they showed a, a funding, um, like a stack, uh, total, Gallion area businesses had done, uh, excuse me, Gallion area, uh, homeowners had done a good job of accessing the funds, and there was a lot of money pending in the other allocation from Bucyrus and the county at large, so, the, for the most part, Gallion eligible homeowners have, have access to those funds pretty well. Matt, anything to add to that? I think people call and ask us where we get a chip application, seems like all the time.
Yeah, that's very.
That and renting the East Park cabin. We could automate that, we would just make, eat donuts, but, yeah.
Application's also available online, on the city website or Great Lakes website.
Yeah, my beef is what they've done to rental housing, not to say that single house, you indulge me per se, single-family housing, home, you know, home, uh, you know, owned by the occupant, home-owned, single-family housing, there's a great need there, but it seems to me that rental housing and rental assistance are equally, or maybe greater needs, and, uh, if you have an hour sometime, we can talk about the, how, why I have a belief that the program tilts towards the areas that will be funding. The last thing you wanna do is submit an application for Crawford County that is asking for all the wrong stuff. The state will, they'll have a state, typical state, um, throw a fit about that, and they won't, they won't award you the money as, as generously, so you, the, what I'm saying is you have to play the game, how they allocate and what their priorities are, and it is for single-family, um, owner-occupied housing, whether, whether that's what we need or not, so, anyway.
So the grant total is a million divided three ways, Bucyrus, Gallion.
Yeah, I don't know, Matt, is that right? Is that what you're saying?
I'm seeing four hundred thousand, three hundred thousand.
Yeah, that must be, that must be.
So city of Bucyrus, city of Gallion equal portions, and then, um, Crawford County, a little bit more.
Right, yes. They talked about the individual, the way they're going to spend it up is by raising the individual, uh, grant award, so instead of, I forget the numbers, so if sixty thousand is a cap, they're gonna do up to ninety thousand, that, that way they're confident that they'll out, that they'll expense the money. It's kind of an interesting, um, setup in the way the system is, 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 uh, is set up to operate, so I'll stop. Little rental housing, rental rehab, that'd be nice, but you won't get it out of this program.
Mr. Richard, uh, I see in section four, there is a submission deadline reference, so, this is, uh, I'm assuming a time.
Yeah, it is, Mike, that's what you're getting, yeah, we need to get this passed, so.
Unless there has any other questions, um, I would like to make a motion then at this time to move ordinance 2022 dash 33, uh, to the final reading for that reason.
Motion by Mr. Richard. Second by Ms. Ziegler.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Bodkins.
Yes.
Ms. Durbin.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Motion carried. Dr. Felner.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance 2022 dash 33.
Motion by Dr. Felner, second by Ms. Ziegler. Discussion? No discussion? Good roll call.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Bodkins.
Yes.
Ms. Durbin.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Motion carried. Alright, ordinance 2022 dash 34.
Ordinance number 2022 dash 34, entitled ordinance retaining McMahon and Degulles L L P as special counsel to represent the city of Gallion in regulatory compliance matters and declaring an emergency.
Dr. Felner.
Yes, this came through finance also, um, I'm just going to, uh, briefly say it, um, is it ordinance regarding, um, EPA questions and, uh, dealing with the EPA, again, with , uh, water treatment, um, you know, the EPA seems to, um, have sites set on our water supply, reservoirs, conditions, things like that, and rightly so, we need to comply with them, um, but sometimes, uh, we're asking for some guidance on future issues, and I'm just gonna turn it over to Mr. Palmer to, uh, kind of define the rest of this agreement and ordinance.
Well, I will defer to the mayor if you'd like, or I'll, go, go ahead and start, and I'll, I'll fill in whatever blanks there may be. Fantastic, uh, exactly what has been described is what this is, this is an agreement with a particular attorney with, uh, with this firm, uh, who is a, somewhat of an extensive background in not only environmental protection matters, but substantial background in, uh, actually processing, uh, uh, being involved in the trenches of those, both through, uh, court action and then through administrative action, uh, this individual, uh, was contacted through the mayor's office, but that said, I've had opportunities to speak with him at length, uh, he will be able to provide a level of expertise and knowledge of subject matter and knowledge of people in the field and those sorts of things that I simply cannot provide, uh, that shared, this will be a, an agreement that will go through my office, so my office will be, uh, in charge of this, uh, but also that he will, uh, remain in contact and, and all the decisions, the important decisions regarding this will be made through my office, but at the same time, they'll be made with this additional level of expertise that this individual will provide. Uh, we've had opportunities both via telephone and then, uh, in the mayor's office through, uh, Zoom to, you know, to work through this with him. Anything, Tom?
No, I just, that, um, they, the firm also has experience in accessing funds, and I can't remember a time in the last thirty or forty years where there's been so much funding available to take care of some of the issues that we have, so I think they'll, they will provide guidance in terms of, of what to ask for and how to ask for it. The only other thing I would add is that, um, we are responding to EPA letters that are, well, I'd describe as relatively technical and highly legalistic, and service director is certainly doing the best she can in terms of responding, but I think both she and I agree to have another set of eyes who deals in that environment all the time will be a good investment on, on the city's part, um, so that we don't submit something that isn't quite right, or we submit something that really doesn't describe the problem that the regulator is looking to, for us to resolve, so I, I see those two areas helping us a lot, and, um, this legal firm has worked in conjunction with the engineering firm before and currently, and so I think that's where we got the, I think the confidence that this would be a, a good firm to bring on board.
All kinds of these, these, uh, all kinds of these firms, when they, when, when this is what they do, um, the, the EPA discussion is a lot more smooth because they have confidence that, um, you know, that, that, that the right things are happening, um, the communication through, through the applications and, and the descriptions that they provide are more thorough, so I think it'll speed up the process, just my two cents.
Wouldn't it be better to sit down and talk with the EPA, instead, instead of spending taxpayers' money on, on outside legal counsel for this? I'm not understanding why we need outside legal counsel. Are we fighting the EPA? Or are we, what are we doing with the EPA?
If, if you, if you have the opportunity to read any of the letters from the regulators.
Oh, yes, I've read a lot of them.
Okay, so if you have, then you would see that they're operating on a legalistic, technical, and enforcement vein, so I, we, there's really probably not much to be game, to be debating, the, it was discussed at committee, that's really where we should, but the issue of whether or not we should be sitting down and talking with them, um, I think, uh, we should be talking them with the, to them with the right people, with the right expertise, I agree with that.
Well, wouldn't it be cheaper to hire a, a technical expert to, to go through that instead of a?
We, we have hired a technical expert, and they'll handle the, see, I didn't mean to cut you off, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Then hiring an outside worker, because that billable hours can add up very quickly.
Well, I think that's why, I, I won't disagree with you on that, and that's why Mr. Palmer said what he did about it running through his office, because I think there's probably a greater deal of confidence with you two, and maybe three, and Mr. Palmer then with the mayor's office, so, I think the, the, another, if, thank you for asking a question, gives me a chance to say something else, my relative experience, more of time than detail, in dealing, um, uh, with regulators like this, is that a mistake that cities make is that they bring in legal counsel when it's too late. If, without picking on Bucyrus in any way, just spend an hour or two hours on their regulatory history and how they were under EPA, Ohio EPA, and then the next thing they knew, they were under enforcement from US EPA, and they've been in that condition for years and years since then, I wanna avoid that by bringing. been in that condition for years and years since then. I want to avoid that by bringing in people whose profession is, as you say, talking with EPA and identifying funding and implementing unagreeable solution. So that's, I mean, if we want to go the route of many other communities who thought, well, we'll just talk with them, and then all of a sudden their enforcement steps up, then we could do that. I'm saying the best way for this, for our customers and for the city, is to bring in on, in, early in this process, someone who has vast experience in doing that. It's, it's true of hiring any lawyer, Ms. Durbin, you bring them in when they can do the maximum. And the foolish client brings them in after it's too late. So I don't want you all to be part of being a foolish client.
Well, the letters that I've read, the city's been in non-compliance for quite a few years. And I, I get the technical stuff, but I don't, I don't read, I don't get, from reading the letters, I don't see the legal ramifications, because the EPA has certain standards for, for quality of drinking water in, in every, in every state of the union, and...
That's not true, but I don't, I mean, it's, it's, it's in Ohio, those drinking standards. That speaks to it. You don't see that. In fairness to Ms. Ward, I don't think she sees it. When you read it, you do not read it as a professional regulator, as a professional water engineer, or as an experienced litigator. You see it differently. And that's the advantage of spending, allocating a relatively small amount of money under the stewardship, if you'll accept that term, of Mr. Palmer, to make sure that we're not spending money in any kind of lavish way. But I would say if you, if failing to do this is a common mistake of communities when they enter into a process that starts with notice of violation and then progresses to findings and orders. We do not want to progress to findings and orders, and indeed want to cultivate a better relationship. One thing I'd agree that you had mentioned, Ms. Durbin, is that the non-compliance goes back a number of years. And, and without getting into personnel issues, that's been dealt with a couple of times, and we're still working on it. So our, our goal is to bring this into compliance, and this is what I think is a relatively small expenditure that can be used by the engineering and administrative team to get to a resolution on, it's not just the water plant, it's the reservoirs and the connection between those. So there, it's not a, it's, it's not a simply one-up, we'll fix these things on railroad street. We've got some work to do with both ODNR and OEPi, OEPA, excuse me, on upgrading the reservoirs and securing our, our raw water supply.
Will this law firm also be addressing ODNR?
Yeah, when we get in, when we move first, yes, they will help assist in making sure that the, that the connection between EPA and ODNR is, is, that, that both those regulators understand what the city is trying to accomplish. So...
So I guess whenever I initially heard about it, I kind of thought more of the word liaison, a legal liaison than attorney. Because I, I know whenever, in the work that I do, there's all different kinds of language, and there's different things that I have to understand, and I'm not an expert in all those. So to have somebody who can explain things, and I was thinking about it, about a couple of months back, whatever, we had that initial EPA communication that we sent out for the violation of drinking water, and there was one or two sentences in there that they didn't like. And the next month, we had to send out a clarification. So just to have somebody to look over those things before we stick them in the mail, or before we send a letter of response back to EPA to say, hey, I don't think you understood this finding, or I don't think you saw that, you know, you can't add in this extra sentence, you have to do exactly what we do. Just those mailers and that one bill cycle cost the city money that, you know, is a shame, but we learned from that that you have to stick to the script. And I think that whenever I look at this, I don't see it as a way that we're fighting them back, nor as a way that we can work with the GPD group and with them and the EPA to kind of all be speaking the same language against a level playing field, because Mr. Palmer is writing the city law, but he's not, he doesn't understand all the big, he's big and small pieces that go into this. So I think that's a good idea. And I, I do think that we talked about the cost and utilities for the finance meeting, and that it would be, you know, very strictly monitored, and that we do have a limit of how much we're going to be transferring into that. And that's in the next ordinance. So it would go beyond that amount before we talk about it again. That's my understanding of that. So I think to eat the initial cost of time and relationships with the different entities, I think that's worth the money, just as a statement, I guess.
Well, I'm still wrapping my head around how a law firm can be a technical advisor when it seems to me having an engineer would, would make more sense than a law firm.
Because I don't know if an engineer would, can look at those things and give us advice that would be prudent for us and the council to take, because they aren't, they're experts in building things, they're not experts in responding to water correspondence. Do you know this as a fact?
Dr. Felner?
Do I know this as a fact?
Yes.
I know, I know it in our discussion in utilities, and that we talked about them kind of acting as a part of the team. So they're all a member of the team. So I'd be an expensive team player.
I just, I just think it's a burden on the taxpayer, you know.
Dr. Felner?
Yes, I made a statement earlier on that may have implied that I was, I said the EPA had seemingly its sights on Galleon. I certainly did not mean to imply that we were ignoring them or that we felt slighted by any of the findings, you know, that, that's certainly not, wasn't my intention. The, the second thing I, to agree with Mrs. Alt, this would be not in every letter responded, they're, they're on the, on the bench to be called on when needed. So it, it would not be, it would be on a case-by-case-as-needed basis, not as a full-time member of, of the team. So I think that the, the money spent will be mitigated by, by that. They're not drawing a set amount just to be on the sideline. It will be when, you know, the mayor or the moderator feel like their counsel is, is necessary for a certain circumstance.
Don't we have anybody in the water department that can, that can read the technical stuff? We don't have anybody in the water department.
So heck of a, the, the, I don't know what to say. This, this is not a great forum for, to answer your question, no. The, there's no one out there that has been through this kind of enforcement and, and I would say corrective action, that's the wrong word, but enforcement and rehabilitation of a plan. So no, there's no one out there.
Is this the new guy?
Yeah, it would be the new guy, it would be the old guy. So the, Mr. Sparkins?
Well, I think, I think we've all, in our everyday life, I've always said this statement all, all the time. You know, we have changes at work, we have changes in the law, we have changes everywhere. Sometimes we'll get, read something five times, and, and I always say, my perception is not always reality. So just, you know, Tom, Mr. Palmer reads something that might not be what is supposed to be said. So, you know, by having somebody that knows this language, knows everything, that can help us be more perceptive. I mean, I, I don't know how many times I say it all the time, so.
So I, I'm, I don't know. Maybe the best answer is to think about it for a couple of weeks. I, I guess I'm all right with that. It just, it will slow down the process of getting us aligned with EPA. But the, I, all of us can think of situations where lawyers are needed, and even in the area of personal injury. There are certain people who are excellent in personal injury and preparing the cases, and then there are certain people, the smart lawyer, the smart person brings in an expert to do that. Okay? And so that's kind of what we're doing. We don't have the expertise in the areas that we need them now, so we're bringing in, if you will, someone that can provide specialized expertise in the area of EPA compliance. It's that simple. So if you don't like the idea, I don't know what else I can say. If there's a better plan for protecting the residents, I'm not buying this, well, that'll cost people money. That is, that's just, that's when you, I believe it's the cost of being in the water filtration, water treatment business. You're going to need consultants and expertise upon occasion. So anyways, no, no...
Mr. Bodkins?
Well, at the finance meeting, when Mr. Palmer said that he might need some help with this, I mean, that, that takes quite a person to just admit that he cannot handle all this language.
There's plenty of areas in the law I don't know about. I don't know about navigated...
And referencing that was because in my business, I've had to contact lawyers over the subject, and they've sent me to a local lawyer. So it does, one lawyer might be real great, but he's not good at this. But I, it was nice that you stepped up and said you need some help. And I do, I've got in that situation a couple of times, not in the capacity of the city going to have to deal with, but I understand that part of the fact.
Two quick things. One is, we've been here before. The one other time during my eight years I've been moderator that this has happened was with the ballot initiative that took place in two thousand fourteen or two thousand fifteen. I wasn't, I did not have a deep background in election law. So that bringing someone on board at that team makes sense. The other thing I wanted to share, with piggybacking on what Ms. Alt said, is that, talking about this being a team approach, what you see before you is not something that just happened and, and fell out of the sky. This is a product of ongoing conversation with GPD, the, the engineers and the attorney. They've all been in this, we've all been in the same room and had this, and we've started forming this team sort of approach. So that's precisely what's going on here.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Mr. Bodkins?
Also, I'd like to state, Ms. Durbin, I'm not trying to undermine anything you said there, but I do agree a little bit, but I just believe that that's the way to do it and the easiest way to, most inexpensively, to hire the outside counsel. I do believe that, because some of that language, we couldn't understand if we read it anymore. That's all I have to say. Thank you. Thanks for the discussion.
I just don't agree with the whole premise. I think you get more, you get more use out of an engineer on the technical stuff, because I don't see a lot of legal stuff in the letters that I've read from the EPA and from the city to the EPA. It's mostly technical stuff. And I think you're get better use of taxpayer money with an engineer than a, than an outside visual counsel. It's just my opinion.
Mr. Sparkins, maybe if you had time, maybe you could check in to see what an engineer would cost on a project like this, and see what they would charge per hour and how much it would cost, and do a comparison. I think that'd be fair.
We hired, if I might, we hired an engineer to deal with what they're good at, and we're proposing to hire a lawyer to assist us in what they're good at. I think that's the, I think that's the, a key distinction. I think just adding hours to engineers to awkwardly, in some cases, wordsmith letters, that how you say what you say does, is important. It's that kind of thing that we're trying to accomplish here, to get that level of advice. So there's, there's no way you can break that.
One of the kind of getting at on that subject was maybe that the amount of money would be the same for every, which one you want, you know what I'm saying?
Questions, and I think, you know... Mr. Palmer, Mr. O'Leary for...
Second reading, so next, so it will be... Before we move to... In the last... A government entity... Construction... In my experience, and this is the private sector, it's always a good idea, not only to have the engineers, but also to have the legal folks with them, because there is interpretations that one side or the other may be making that the other side doesn't understand or misinterprets. We also want to have, be sure that everybody, including, in this case, the EPA and us here in Galleon, are on the same page.
Well...
And that's, I'm just going to make that observation.
Maybe through the years, if we'd been more compliant, we wouldn't be at this point.
Well, that's, that's for a discussion sometimes, but we're at this point. So my point to that would be, you know, what do we do moving forward to get to where we don't have trouble? So that's just my observation. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, I think we'll move on to the next ordinance. Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash thirty-five.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash thirty-five entitled ordinance authorizing the safety service director to advertise for bids and to enter into a contract with the lowest, the lowest and best bidder therefore as provided by law for the Brant Road Turnland project to proceed authorizing payment therefore and declaring an emergency.
Yes, this came through finance, and I'm just gonna...
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary.
Happy to. This is a little bit, the structure is unique in that the city is going to be working in cooperation for funding and through the, through the administration, the contract, through a county-wide entity called... ...this is their first project. They're able to draw down funds through ODOT for these kinds of, of infrastructure slash development projects. So about a year ago, I believe, we kind of worked this project, you know, kind of put it together. The TID applied for the funds and were awarded the funds, and so this is the process of setting up the authorization to bid. And on the funding side, what will happen is that we'll appropriate all the money, and then the TID will reimburse us. So that's how the, if I, I hope I'm clear on how the funding will work. On the administration, something I don't, I don't know we've, I've ever done, is to co-administer the project. So we're gonna see exactly what that means. I think that one thing we hope it means is that the county engineer will provide actual onsite inspection for the project. And in my... And my hope or thought is that we'll handle the paperwork side through our office, that the actual, that, that funding of the project and paying the vendor will be ours. I don't, I really believe that the, what I'm hoping is that there'll be a county employee that would be designated to do the inspection. So that's. What we'll do is provide, two more things if you'll adopt, Mr. President. But if you think in your mind's eye, and it'll be in the rearview pretty soon, the access point for power equipment for decades was god awful. It pulled out right by the Brant Road intersection and its volume increased on 598, it became more and more of a, you know, pull out of there, it's your own peril. In the redevelopment of the old Pico site, the developer has agreed to put their access point on Brant Road. So while some of us wish it was a little bit farther west towards the water tower, it, it's been positioned so that it lines up with Keller Drive, so that people coming and going out of the new industrial facility, there'll be an intersection there, not signalized at this point, and then a left-hand turn lane to allow northbound traffic to go up 598 on 30 east and west. So oftentimes, what happens is that that kind of transportation improvement happens after the spec building is built and there's a new 150-person or 75-person factory there. And so you're trying to move a factory building in there, warehousing building in there, and build a turn lane at the same time. What, what we're hoping is that this will get this roadway infrastructure in place for future development. So the timing of it is, is, I think, critical. It's one of the neat things about the project. And the sooner that we can get the authorization to bid, the, the better we will be at being, at fixing the, the best time to sell the project. So it complements and doesn't conflict with the overall widening of 598.
Mr. Leary?
Oh, so there's a turn lane going north and a turn lane going south on 598, correct?
No.
This is Brant Road.
I'm sorry?
Okay, yeah.
This is Brant Road.
Yes.
The turn lanes are associated with the 598 widening project.
Yeah, there, there will be a turn lane.
This is a Brant Road.
This is a Brant Road.
Yeah. So, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there'll be a turn lane on 598 going.
New building that's going up. There's the hotel. And there's going to be a dedicated left turn lane.
Only on this portion?
Yes.
Not on the east side?
No, not westbound. Only, so there'll be a turn lane northbound, to, southbound, a straight, and a, a northbound, signaled so that people exiting this have a smoother. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's three lanes that'll have a turn lane, but westbound has to do with traffic.
Exactly. The, so this, this part has already been designed and paid for and things like that. This is, this is in addition to, but not really part of the 598 widening project, even though it's in that area.
Okay, the mayor stated that we put, we pay the money and then we get reimbursed, is that correct?
Yeah, we'll have the contract. This would authorize the service director to bid the overall project. It take, it did take a jump on cost. I'm not real happy about that, but it has to stop.
To this existing number, though, it was.
Yeah.
And where, where are we taking, what fund are we taking out? One, two, or three, or?
Well, I think it's, it, the appropriation will be. Go ahead.
Do this, had discussion with them, and Belinda Miller is actually on vacation, so we cannot get an answer. But as you see in the ordinance, there's a blank line with appropriate. Where does that go? Does that make sense?
That, that, that's another, that was my other question.
So, yeah, so it's, do we advance from the, from the general fund to 401 and then pay it back? Is it a transfer into, and then the, the TID money, because it's specific to the roadway construction, would actually stay in the 401 line item? It's basically reimbursing the 401 fund. And do we transfer money from 201 in? Or can we do that? Or because the general fund supplements the 201, we take it all out of general fund and put it in the 401? That's the question that we're trying to get the answer to.
You'll have that answered next.
We are hoping, yes. Like I said, that, that discussion with, we had extensive discussion with that, and Cindy McCaffrey wanted to run it past Belinda, make sure that it could go. But if we can do an amendment to this ordinance specifically to put in Fund 401 in that blank line right now, that will get us through at least showing for a first reading.
I just was wondering, and you probably can't answer this at the moment until this is passed and the votes are done, but is there like a generalized timeframe that we're looking at to start this project?
Yeah, I thi, yes, that's a really good question. I think it is bid late in the year, partially constructed over the winter, and finished next spring. And the only question mark would be how far along the big project gets. So if they're, if they don't run into a glitch, then we would direct the contract to start then. So we'll have real liberals, not the right word, but we'll have a pretty wide open window for starting and completion date, so that it, depending on where it, it ends up, how late in the year.
Mr.?
I had a.
Did that answer your question? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I had a citizen contact me, and I, I don't know this, I said I would get back to them. Are there, will there be sidewalks along 598?
No.
Yes?
No.
No? Okay.
There could be, but no, they're not included in the short, you may be, the person asking, maybe, it would all have been at local cost. So the project, if you go back three or four years, there were, there were some doubters in this room whether or not we could actually fund that project. Without the $3 million in state funds, we wouldn't be here at that point. So there's a small extension of sidewalk that goes from Cedar Gate across Portland Way and over to Arby's, and that's it.
Dr. Bellner?
Yes, I was going to propose a motion to make, to amend ordinance 2022-35 by stating after appropriated in Fund 401 capital improvements.
Motion by Dr. Bellner, seconded by Ms. Ziegler.
Dr. Bellner?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Parkins?
Yeah.
Ms. Durbin?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Right, motion carried. This isn't something that necessarily needs to pass today. We actually probably shouldn't pass it today, so there's no further discussion, but I'm going to move on to ordinance number 2022-36.
Ordinance number 2022-36, entitled. An ordinance amending ordinance number 2021-114, permanent 2022 appropriations by appropriate and unappropriates funds and declaring emergency.
All right, and we have a discussion. Dr. Bellner?
Yes, this also came through Finance, and I would dearly love it if Mr. Satterfield could help us out on here.
I can help you out on one of them.
Okay.
Section, section four is the 302531, which is the coronavirus relief fund, Fund 267. The spending on that was supposed to be concluded December 31st. This is the balance left over in that fund, then that money needs to go back to the state of Ohio. Currently, when we passed the budget, the 22 budget, there was no money appropriated in that line to reimburse that, so we're just asking to re, to appropriate that money, which is the balance left in that account, into the 52389 line, so we can cut the state check and close out that fund. I think the $20,000 has to do with.
Yeah, what we spent, yeah, if I might, yeah, the, what we spent a long time talking about, the ability to have funding for the law director to access the engineering fund, that would be three, and then section two is the one that we spent a lot of time talking about.
Right, I was just going to say, two and three refer to the ordinance in large part, the ordinance that you looked at and decided to hold to another reading. So I, obviously, there's no reason to pass those before that decision is made.
And then five, if I might, Dr. Bellner, or Mr. President? That has to do with appropriating unused license plate tax funds from last year. So this year's funding program will be last year's money that wasn't expended and this year's money with a small slice, if you will, of, of 201 money, regular gas tax money.
Mr. Satterfield, is, is there any timeline for section four? Is it, I wonder if there needs to be an amendment to remove section two and three?
Yes. If you want to pass four and five, then you're going to have to remove.
I'd like to go with that. I think you're good for a reading. But you got one vote.
Is there a reason, Mr. Satterfield, is there a reason why the section four?
We're not getting, I mean, I don't have a timeline on what, we just need to get that money back to them. I mean, the, the invoice, if you will, coming from the state when, when Ms. Ward closed it out was at the end of last, or beginning of this month, at the end of last month. So the sooner we can get them the money, the better. It was just something like that.
Well, I, if I might, man, I would just leave it to a first reading. I heard one council member who had objections about the, the legal services and the engineering firms, so I would, you know, I didn't hear anyone else as concerned as, as Ms. Durbin was about those. The other ones, I think you just end up redoing the ordinance, and you gotta do section five, so I just give it a, my, my request would be to just give it a first reading and just head on, head on to the rest of the agenda.
Any further discussion? Now, we can move on to ordinance number 2022-37.
Ordinance number 2022-37, entitled Ordinance Authorizing the Safety Service Director to Accept American Rescue Plan ARPA Funds and Sign a Document Necessary and Declaring Emergency.
Dr. Bellner?
Yes, this also came through Finance, and I think that it is pretty self-explanatory about the, not the cares dollar, but the ARPA funds and signing the documents to authorize the acceptance of it. Anybody wants to elaborate on that?
These are documents I set through webinar on how to fill out the compliance reports. I've set through two webinars. These documents have to be uploaded by April 30th into that to be in compliance. I completed the, the first part of reporting process today on the monies that were spent last year, and these are just documents that needed to be signed, that we didn't know they needed to be signed to accept at the first webinar. One is that we're in compliance with 1964 ordinance, or law. The other one is that we're signing the agreement to accept the funds. And then the last document that I could provide for them is the budgetary monies for that. So if we can get this passed, and this, this truly is something that needs to be done tonight, these are documents that Ms. Ward needs to have signed so that I can scan them, upload them in, and we will make compliance with these reports.
Ms. Durbin?
What is this expiration date? November 30th, 2021? Is that anything?
Looks like, should I say?
I think that's whenever sections 2602B and 603B of the Social Security Act added in the ARPA money.
Yeah.
So that's whenever this act was put into place, was March 11, 21, that authorized the Department of the Treasury to give local governments ARPA funds.
Is this money, is this the money coming from the county?
No.
This is American Relief Plan. The $522,000 that we got last year and anticipated another $522,000 this year. This is, we, we used $245,000 last year for the, to help utility customers pay utility bills. If you look at the ordinance that we talked about earlier with GPD, the, the money for the GPD is coming from this, the engineering for the water plants, coming from the ARPA funds. And there's still going to be about, I think, roughly $600,000 plus.
Yeah, it's the.
After we get this year's money, that, that will still be available to use.
Well, yeah, the, yes.
I'm not, I'm not sure.
Okay, the short, yeah, the, the, this is our second tranche of our allocation.
Correct.
The ability to compete for money that the county was allocated is kind of a whole nother discussion, has nothing to do with this legislation.
U.S. Treasury changed some rules effective April 1st. They actually simplified the reporting process for entities such as us that are going to receive less than $10 million. The very, very generic forms online to do, instead I, I completed the, the first quarter report, there was spending that has been done up through March 31st that included last year's funds, of which there was $245,000. But to complete this, we have to send them the, the signed documents that we should have in front of you. So it's basically saying we are agreeing to spend the money appropriately and as it, as it's meant to be. And then the other one is, is in compliance with, instead I, how was, so 1964?
Civil rights.
Civil rights, so 1964 is a one-page document, says we're going to comply with other two-page documents.
Title's.
Yeah. And then like you said, lastly, uploading the budgetary fiduciary stuff that we had, that they can see.
Any further discussion? Dr. Bellner?
We've got four days to get this signed, so I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and proceed to final reading on ordinance 2022-37.
Motion by Dr. Bellner, seconded by Ms. Ziegler.
Dr. Bellner?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Parkins?
Yes.
Ms. Durbin?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Motion to. Ms. Ziegler?
I will make a motion to pass ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash thirty-seven.
Motion by Ms. Ziegler, seconded by Ms. Al. Discussion. Roll call.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Bodkins?
Yes.
Ms. Durbin? Ms. Dr. Felmer?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Motion carried. All right, with the, no ordinance, or I'm sorry, the next resolution, resolution number twenty twenty-two dash five.
Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash five entitled, resolution approving and modifying the prior acts of the Department of Safety Services Director approving and declaring emergency.
Dr. Felmer?
I hope this is a last, um, finance committee heard this one. And this is an invoice that needs to be paid for chemicals from the water treatment plant. And I, it's a perfectly acceptable then and now. With bonded chemicals, I mean, we've done business with forever and those chemicals are necessary for the proper operation of the water.
Thank you, Dr. Felmer. Oh, Dr. Felmer. Mr. Richard.
Again, as Dr. Felmer indicated, this is a item that we've actually already received the product. So our treatment is already used it. So having said that, I think we should pay these folks. So I will make a motion to suspend the rules on resolution twenty twenty-two dash five.
And I would like to suspend the rules by Mr. Richard, seconded by Ms. Ziegler. Roll call.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Bodkins?
Yes.
Ms. Durbin? Ms. Dr. Felmer?
Yes.
Motion carried. Second motion to, or pass the resolution.
I will, as President, I'll make a motion to pass resolution, I mean, twenty-two dash five.
Motion made by Mr. Richard, seconded by Ms. Ziegler. Discussion? No discussion, roll call.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Bodkins?
Yes.
Ms. Durbin?
Yes.
Dr. Felmer?
Yes.
Motion carried. Right next is ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash thirty-eight.
Orders number twenty twenty-two dash thirty-eight, entitled, ordinance authorizing the police chief and/or safety service director to apply for and accept a grant from Ohio Criminal Justice Services OJ, OCGS, the amount of up to five hundred thousand dollars and declaring emergency.
Mr. Richard?
I was going to just ask the chief if he might be able to elaborate on this a little bit.
Uh, yeah, so it's basically ARPA funding that allowed, given Mike Wine, in conjunction with Ohio Criminal Justice Services and, I believe, his House, General Assembly Hospital, maybe one sixty-nine, have set aside a hundred and seventy-five million dollars for addressing issues that were directly related to the COVID-19 pandemic, specifically looking to reduce violent crimes that have been on the rise since that took place. So some of the things that we're looking at going with it, it was, it was a time sensitive deadline. So we didn't have time to go through the committee in the last council meeting. It was due the twenty-fifth, so we had less than a week when we found out about it. They've sent, extended the deadline to the twenty-ninth, when we had just submitted it prior to that. Some of the allowable expenses, if you will, for it include equipment. And we're looking to upgrade dispatch center because we became aware that some of the equipment in there is supposed to be in need of service or replacement. That's, the vendor just got back with us. That's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for replacement. We're also looking at addressing, Mayor Lear's concern of the cameras that we talked about before, I believe, in the last council meeting. That potentially could be incorporated in that as well. There's a company that had a package deal for ten camera system and it takes away all the protocols that we would have to maintain and upgrade. So it's all cloud-based, so we're not going to have, we're paying for the service more so than the equipment. So we won't have to keep up with the cameras and replacement, DVRs, redaction software, all that type of stuff. They take care of everything, it's all inclusive. And in addition to that, we've had body cameras in the past, but we haven't implemented a full body one program per se with policies. And since that time, those body cameras have since become pretty much defunct to the point that they're no longer working consistently. And that's something that's a concern for me because we only have transparency within the police department. It also assists with prosecution of those violent crimes that we've been experiencing. So that was one of the other asks that we have met. Grant funding request is for the requesting the body cameras or having a body camera program and also the cameras for the police cruisers. They would work seamlessly together so that when we also arrives on scene, what's seen on the camera of the dash cam, and then we get out a cruiser that will pick up and be seamless. So those are pretty major things that we're looking at, the camera system, the equipment for the dispatch center and the dash cam body cam.
Ms. Al?
And I'd just like to say that I did have one question, but it was answered within the ordinance that I think it's nice that this is a hundred percent funded, so there's no such mismatch with this, which I think is always nice whenever, I mean, you know, department goes after a grant because it's all going to be covered.
Yeah, we're trying to be physically responsible in that sense that we're trying to get as, as much of the funding as we can. And that was the highlight to it, is that it's a hundred percent. There's no match, no burden to the taxpayers additionally or infractions. So, how's your? Just say the green that runs in twenty-nine. They extended it to the twenty-ninth. And we're still in contact with our representative that's reviewing our proposal or request.
Are we saying the twenty-ninth of this month, of April?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it was quick. I've got to give credit to Detective Lieutenant Ryan Strange. He, he took the leadership on that to oversee the brand new break writing process. So, yeah, fingers crossed.
I'll try to help you appreciate it.
Yeah.
Those down.
Mr. Richard?
Given that information, and again, like I agree with Ms. Al that a hundred percent grant is a very rare item, no matter who it is or where, what involves. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-eight and move it to the final reading.
Motion by Mr. Richard, seconded by Ms. Ziegler.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Bodkins?
Yes.
Ms. Durbin?
Yes.
Dr. Felmer?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ms. Ziegler?
If there's no other discussion, because there are a timeline with this, I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-eight.
Motion by Ms. Ziegler, seconded by Ms. Al. Discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Bodkins?
Yes.
Ms. Durbin?
Yes.
Dr. Felmer?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance number twenty twenty-two two dash twenty-one.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one, entitled, ordinance authorizing and directing the safety service director to advertise for bids and to enter into a contract for a planner for the splash part together with necessary instructions.
First reading, Ms. Durbin.
This came out of the parts of recreation committee today. But we had a little legal thing last night and I will let the city law director explain now, please.
Are you referring to the, the vote that was made to amend? Ms. Durbin?
Yes.
Okay. Simply, I was asked by Ms. Durbin about an amendment to this to change the amount of money that is indicated in section two, I believe from seventy-five thousand to eighty thousand dollars. There was a motion and the bottom line is there was an attempt to amend it. At the committee meeting last night, it was because of procedural matters, not successful. I, she had asked me what to do and I said, anyone has the right to make an amendment at any time. So that same amendment could be made this evening or any other time. It was before council.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to amend the amount from seventy-five thousand, eighty thousand. As eighty thousand was the amount approved by the Freeze Board Foundation. Could I have a second on that, please?
Ms. Durbin, make a motion. Seconded by Ms. Ziegler.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm tired.
That's all right, you're fine. Roll call.
Ms. Durbin?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Bodkins? Dr. Felmer?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
All right, motion carried.
Now, I would like to, I would like to, how do I want to phrase this?
What, what are you trying to do?
I'm trying to bring this before the council to pass this ordinance.
Well, it's, it's a time for discussion now, so make a motion then.
I can make the motion, okay. I would like to make a motion to.
It's the first reading, so.
Yes, that's fine, too. Yeah. Oh, so I may, I would like to make the motion to have to.
Suspend the rules and move to the final.
Okay, I'm sorry.
But you have to, you have to make a motion to suspend the rules if you'd like, if you like this.
I don't, I don't want to suspend the rules.
Well, then we would, then, yeah, nothing.
Then, then we have, right, this is the first reading.
Then we'll move on to the second reading.
Okay, all right. A whole network.
Then you don't have to do anything, you just write. Is that what you want to do? I want to make sure I, I'm clear on it. Go ahead, Dr. Felmer. Okay.
Yeah, there's no emergency.
No, there's no emergency.
Anyway, so, you know, there's no emergency clause in this.
We haven't received the freeze money yet, though. There's no emergency.
If, while things happen and this project gets bid soon, is there a possibility that it could be completed prior to? Because the, the plan was to complete it. Yeah, okay.
No, it's, I think under whatever procurement method council decides to approve, the, the, it, it's really a fall construction season.
Okay.
The work that has been done to procure it through state purchasing, we have a vendor who's, can meet, I think, suitable specs and, and deliver the service September, October, and be done by the end of the year.
Thank you.
Except there's a discussion, I think that's an important part of the discussion, how we procure it. And so, it's not, no need at this point, after the long meeting, to get into that. But I hope that discussion happens.
I do have a question. I'm sorry to interrupt on you. So why is this, and this might be a silly question, but why is this coming through on its own? Like, because I don't remember doing this for any other freeze projects that we did last year. So like, all of this, do we do this for every single freeze project or is this special? Like, is it, why is it like this?
Well, I would answer the question, depends on the procurement. If the project is less than fifty thousand dollars, we use a competitive selection. Matt calls a number of, let's say, fence providers for all the dog lovers. And we get the best price for that. And then that purchase is approved by the board of control. So some of the freeze projects under fifty grand aren't bid.
Okay, so we don't.
Right, many of the projects that have been constructed over the last five years or so have been procured through state purchasing. And I think that's what the discussion that I think would, would be helpful, where there's a, there's a price certain and specifications that have been bid statewide.
Say one, can you say that one different way? I don't understand any of you.
You don't have to bid it if it's been bid by the state through state purchasing.
Okay, okay.
So that's how the, the lowest bidder has been determined by the state and we purchase through that.
So this, so this specific thing has not gone through that process? So that's why we're looking at it like this?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have anything to do with how you're looking at it, no. I would just say that if, if we were asked, we would, have, would suggest, would have suggested, suggest that we use state purchasing to procure it. I think it's a shorter timeline, it's more certain price. And one of the issues, when you read the specs, I'm not certain that other, there's a number of other, there's a number of ways to build this safety service. And I'm not sure that, well, I know that all of them construct the same thing. So this would be, this would give some certainty to what we're purchasing. That's why I would recommend it, but anyway, Mr. Richard, just call.
Yeah, Mr. President, as all, just so you know, any freeze project, which is, as the mayor just shared, which is over fifty thousand dollars in expenditure that is going to be bid, will come through the council. In addition, the state purchasing, if it's over fifty thousand, will come through council and just won't be bid.
Okay.
It's a more direct route, like the mayor just said.
So we'll see another ordinance later on?
You could, yeah.
With the specs.
Not, I get it.
Who knows?
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. Thank you.
Do we have any other discussion? If we can move on to other documents. We have, Dr. Felmer?
Yes, the idea of a, using some of the forthcoming ARPA funds to help Sarah Beagle Daycare was discussed in finance. No ordinance was produced regarding that. But we, as a committee, decided that it would be a good idea to have a discussion in front of full council. And so there's a representative here. And I'm so sorry, I don't remember.
Troy Fryman.
Troy Fryman. Troy is the president of the board for Sarah Beagle. He was present among some other members. So if you could give us an idea about the intention, what the uses are, that would be great. And I assume that you're here for that? Oh, thanks, because, okay.
What we're requesting for the money is currently, we need to get, we're maximized with the amount of employees that we, that we have that work there, the teachers. So we're wanting to add two more full-time teachers, which will allow us to bring more students in, to create more revenue. And with this money, we're going to be able to jumpstart that. So the biggest obstacle that we came across was how do we sustain it? If it works for a year, that would be great, but how are we going to sustain it? And one of the first things we're going to do is if parents of the children that are currently there, if they pay upfront, sixty days or thirty days ahead of time, they get twenty percent off. It's been that way for almost ten years now. We're gonna, we're gonna avoid that. So there's some revenue, plus with the more children that we have and currently, or more on top of what we already have, we're going to have revenue there to be able to financially sustain what our goal is, is to have as many kids in there as we can. But yet, by getting two more teachers there, we'll be able to do that. So to just kind of, it's kind of wastes too much of your time. That's exactly what we're going to use it for, nothing else. We are going to set up a, a fund so that we are, anytime, anything needs to be checked and balanced, we will be responsible for and be able to prove at any point that, that, that money is used only for that purpose. So that there aren't any, what, any gray areas. Mr. President, I know you weren't here, the mayor and the finances. I would like to say that briefly, there was a lot of discussion that was unnecessary at the last meeting that we had. So I would like to apologize. So that's why we're just trying to keep it quick and brief, but that is exactly, only what it's going to be used for. So.
So the, the creation of two more teacher positions.
Correct.
Which will, how many levels do you have currently?
Four.
Four classes?
Yes.
And you have pages and pages of waitlist.
We have four.
Potential clients for each, for each class. So the addition of. So the addition of two additional teachers will, uh, free up some space?
Some space, yes.
Oh, sure.
But as the kids get out of preschool, then that opens up a window for more. So it is on a, it's not a permanent role, it's attendance, it's constantly evolving, but more people move and so forth, but yeah. Um, as they move on to the gang, school system, then that opens up. The list is constantly moving, so.
How many, how many children does each teacher, uh, responsible for?
They're allowed up to twelve, but...
So you're looking at twenty-four mores?
We're, we're not going to do that, because we want to make sure that the classes don't become so big that there's kids that aren't getting as much attention as another one. Or, per se, we want, we're trying to keep them around eight, and that way the kids are, we could go more, but we've kept it small, because we want each child to be able to get the attention that they need. So, yeah, that's all.
I called Dr. Byrne at that today, and she said that you guys did receive the payroll protection plan money back in 2020 for, um, COVID relief, which was a substantial amount. And that was kind of for the exact same reason that you're asking today for the funds. So she was kind of in a hurry whenever I talked to her today. But I just, my only concern is that it seems like, you know, I definitely think childcare is very important. We can't really talk about economic development if we don't have childcare. But whenever I'm thinking about the agency, private business receiving funds in 2020 that would force similar use, are the funds that we are going to give you be sustainable? And I did a little bit of research, and it looked like just earlier this month, uh, up until earlier this month, childcare centers with a step up to quality care rating were eligible for a one and a half time payment. Like, so for if you were, for an infant getting seven eighty-one hourly or one eighty a week, up until way earlier this month, you were able to bill for one and a half times that. So is that, going back to that regular rate of one eighty or seven eighty-one hour, going to be really hurtful for the agency and like, so is this money just kind of going to be able to supplement you to keep you where you were at when you were receiving those pandemic rates?
Uh, no, it'll actually be, it'll be, re, say your question again, just to make sure I don't worry.
So up until earlier this month, all childcare agencies in state Ohio are receiving rates at one and a half times the normal rate?
Correct.
So now that those are going back down to regular rate, is this money going to kind of be able to maintain you where you're at, because you were used to that one and a half type payment?
No, because we're going to compensate that with that twenty percent.
Okay.
Decrease, or, um, by avoiding the twenty percent discount.
Okay, and then I also saw that there was a workforce recruitment and retention sub-grant that was available to also up to, um, quality providers, and the applications were due in February. Uh, with the size of your center, you could have applied for up to around twenty-two thousand dollars. Do you know if you guys did that?
Uh, I don't know if you did that or not, I could, certainly check on her that, and let you know.
Um, and I saw that later this evening, so I wasn't able to ask her that. Um, and then I know that we talked about bringing on two additional staff and increasing the pay rate, two dollars an hour for the extra. The building can hold a hundred students, right, and you have twenty-six of you old. So you were really looking at kind of maximizing the rate, and I think that, I heard the stress of running that today, that you guys have two staff out, and tomorrow if one more calls off, then you have to close, because you wouldn't have the staffing ratio. So I definitely hear that concern, and, I mean, this stressful. I, I work for a business that is funded through Medicaid funding, and it's very hard to be able to provide quality services to adults and children, whenever you don't give a lot of money for it. But I was just kind of curious as to how you used the federal program that's available and how you reinvested it into the business, um, so that way it is sustainable. And I do know this is, you know, the longest single-run family childcare thing, or center since, I think it was nineteen seventy, I saw it. Was that it? Is that the longest-running childcare center?
When I, when I talked to them several years ago, um, I was told it was the oldest continuously operating daycare center in the state of Ohio.
I didn't realize that.
So we got, I got...
I told them that there was an older lady on the board at that time. I can't remember her name, she was a little short lady, and she, she told me this, she said...
Pain low, possibly, too.
Yeah, but it, but Sarah Beagle's been continuously operating for many, many, many years. They've, they've never closed their doors, is my understanding.
Correct.
So I appreciate the answer to the question, certainly be able to talk back, reach back out with Byrne at that, but that was really my only thing. I mean, I definitely for, you know, supporting businesses in childcare so that our economy can continue to grow and their safety and security in childcare. But I do just have to ask with due diligence of having been taking advantage of all of the funding available. So thank you for that.
Yep. Any other discussion on Sarah Beagle? I appreciate your time.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you. Sorry I couldn't move you to the front of the line this time. Hey, don't worry at all, thank you.
Mr. Richard.
Well, I was just going to make a comment, uh, on Sarah Beagle. Uh, my daughter, who now is in Grand Rapids High School, uh, she was there. I know a lot of folks that had children there. Uh, the quality and the professionalism that, that we've seen, uh, when Madison was there, uh, I think is outstanding. And to a testament to that is the four pages on the waiting list of people that would like to be there. Unfortunately, as Ms. Alt indicated, there's probably not enough of, uh, good quality, uh, uh, services available for daycare. So I am also in favor of, of getting you guys, uh, what you need to function good.
Thank you, Richard. Is there any other comments?
I'm not sure how, you know, there's obviously nothing to forward, this is, uh, legislation-wise. Um, I wondered what, maybe some options?
One of your committees could be discussing this and come up with a number and a plan.
Yeah, we, um, we want to move this to, which committee do we want to move this to?
No, it, they, they came to finance, the group of them came to finance. I'd, I'd send it back there, and I don't think there's, it's not a real complicated issue. I would say that the city of Galleon, some of us may keep a, a close eye on this and not, and others none at all, but I keep a relatively close eye on what other communities have used either their CARES dollars or their ARPA dollars. One thing that we should feel good about and consistently, uh, point out is how much of our money has gone to individual residences and individual businesses in the community. And this would just be another example of, of assisting a business in, uh, in a, in, I think, a pretty critical area. So you see, if you just spend a little bit of time, and I don't, you see a lot of things, this money being used that are really consumed by the local government themselves on themselves. And, uh, I think that's something council's done a really admirable job in the category of not getting enough credit, but you all have gone along with our recommendation to put that money in utility bills in businesses, and this is another, I think, real important business. I think you supplement, I know there's questions to be asked, but when you, when you keep this business going, it's keeping a lot of other businesses going, because their parents, the daycare folks, the parents are going to work someplace that keeps other businesses in the area going. And so I think that's why you get a little bit of a multiplier effect, if that's the right word. But anyway, thank you for letting me say that. I think we've done a really good job of spending it on our residents, and this would be another good example of that.
Thank you, Mayor. Have any committee dates? I guess, Mr. Bobbitt, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was going to say, this, I think that Sarah Beagle would be a good, would be a good investment for the council. I think it's a good help for the city. They've been there a long time, they do a good job.
Thank you. Mr. Richard.
Uh, I guess I'll start it off. Uh, is, uh, the fraud ordinance committee, uh, will be on May third, Tuesday? No?
No, we can't do that.
Oh, that's right.
Right.
That's right. Would we decide on May fourth?
Well, either May fourth, we either do it before, uh, before the utilities committee, or, or, or make the...
I didn't talk to...
That's, that's, um, we have utilities on.
Or...
The fourth. Let's just do one order. One, I didn't say that.
Well, if that's, if that's all right with, um, my other, uh, committee members here, um, it would be, oh, earlier, just like thirty minutes before, uh, on Wednesday.
The fourth.
On the fourth.
Okay, I'd know probably with that.
Is that okay?
And then you've got the seven o'clock utilities, right?
Yeah. So we're saying six thirty? Yeah, six thirty on that tip.
And then on the fourth, we'll have law ordinances at seven?
No.
No. Utilities at seven.
Very good. Is he here?
Thursday, the nineteenth is the next guy in Freeze Fire Hall, they do come in.
Seven P M?
Seven P M.
Mr. Bobbitt, you go to the twelve?
The twelve, May twelfth?
Yep.
For streets?
It's building in economic development.
Uh, that's supposed to be May seventeenth. We don't have a chair for that right now.
Okay.
But with two members, we could still have it, correct?
Right.
So I would say, schedule it for the...
The normal time, seventeen, yes.
And, uh, finances on the eighteen?
There will be an agenda that night, Doc, uh, on the economic development. There's the, the ECID, the, you know, somebody's heard that acronym before. That's going to come forward as a formal presentation. And, uh, the Port Authority Director is going to invite the Ricker and Eckler to come up and make a presentation.
Really?
Yes.
Wow.
Be ready to be wowed. They do a lot of the ECID work around the state. Mark Rantella's worked with them, and I think that's, rather than him explaining, seems like a recurring theme tonight, rather than him explaining an area of the law that he is not expert, is we're an expert up here to educate the people on the, how ECID operates, so. Wouldn't be the first, in fact, it would be kind of how it's done when you have specialized legal counsel. Kind of get business done easier, but anyways, not to be too sarcastic. But anyways, that will happen that night. They want to get that set, because there are at least two Galleon projects that are looking at utilizing ECID to start one and jumpstart another one. So I'm kind of excited about, we'll see what, what you all think about it as a financing tool.
All right, thank you. Do we, do we have any other comments from council that's not, uh, Ms. Durbin?
Oh, regarding the replacement for Aaron, are we just advertising on the website? Are we putting it in the, um...
It'll be in the newspaper as well.
It'll be in the newspaper.
It goes on the city Facebook page, it's on the city council Facebook page, and it'll be in the newspaper as well.
And it's on, and it's on the webpage, yes.
In our website, council.
Yeah, it'll, it'll appear on this coming Saturday, um, Wednesday, and then the following Saturday. Advertising it three times.
Ms. Pope, I may ask a question here. That is customary, but not statutory, correct?
No, it's in our council room, but...
Which is a custom that we've adopted, as, it's not, the law doesn't require any of that. So that's, that's where that comes from.
I don't think the councils go into the specifics of where it needs to be advertised, do you?
No, no.
Just that it is.
This is the law, yeah.
And all of that is customary. I don't want to fight with you, but I wanted to be, that, that, how that's advertised, how we've done it since the statutory form has become a custom. I think it's worked pretty well, but there's nothing in the statute that, that, that tells this appointing authority, other appointing authorities in the statute, how they advertise or don't advertise for someone. So I wanted to clarify that for some of the audience members.
Do you have any other comments from the council? That will move to the elected officials. I'll start with, uh, Mr. Sagerfield.
You have your customary reports in front of you. I'm happy to report that the statement of cash position is a one-pager now instead of two. Well, it's actually two, maybe, but instead of seeing twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two and having to get that later out, it's already there. Uh, revenue report, month-to-date, one point nine million and change. We're at twenty-six percent, uh, per annual, target is at thirty-three. Uh, page two is our expense report. Again, you see, if you look at the bottom of the numbers, it's page thirty-six is thirty-six. I mean, it's meant to be four, page seventy is seventy for the revenue, and page seventy is seventy on the expected, which is a, it's a lot of detail. I'm just giving you the bottom-line numbers. Uh, month-to-day expenses are one point one million dollars. Uh, so those that need to be paid hopefully when it goes out every month. And then, uh, your statement of cash position, um, going over, and, I mean, I will tell you that twenty-one is reconciled and closed, twenty-two is not reconciled, so we're still not reconciled in January, and working daily on that, trying to get that down. Um, so if you look at police and fire pensions showing negative numbers, just because we haven't made a transfer yet this year. Uh, we haven't made a transfer yet, so that's why that number continues to go up and keep paying employees, but we haven't transferred money. Certainly will stand very well.
I appreciate your, your hard work and diligence, getting the twenty twenty-one closed down, I think that was, uh...
I was hoping that it would be more due for work than it was, and it's not. There's still a lot of work to be done.
Sure, I understand. All right, thank you. Mr. Sparks?
I don't have anything, just want to thank, uh, Brian's department for all their hard work and everybody's due diligence and this. Um, you know, once he gets everything closed out for the year and started for this month, or for this year, it's kind of, it'll go through a lot faster than what we have been, so, um, something to look forward to. And, uh, I think Brian probably never thought it was going to be this hard, but I do appreciate his effort and everything he does, so.
Thank you, Mr. Sparks. Mr. Palmer?
Yes, members of council, uh, a little bit of news, I haven't even shared this with Tom yet. Uh, yesterday, uh, the, uh, final contract was signed for the Central Hotel. So the clock is starting to tick for the closing, and, uh, that is coming soon. And, uh, everyone, as far as I'm aware, is full speed ahead and everything is ready to go.
That's it. Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Yeah, Mayor?
I think you all heard enough from me tonight. I would say that when this is now taped together, the, we, we need to be concerned with the, the, the revenue and expenses in the water utilities, but it's not as, as dire as I thought, actually. Uh, but we'll, we'll be talking about that on the fourth, so I'll save it for then. Also, hey, the other thing, real quick?
Yeah?
The Tuta Thunk, we have seven point three million as a general fund balance. Maybe we've been doing this for a few years now, and I was like, wow, how do we do that? Need professional city management to accomplish this. No, we didn't.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, you know, I, I, I just, I want to, uh, I want to thank the police chief and our department and the police department for their hard work in Mill Creek of the week. We, we all, we all seen and heard, and, um, and, uh, and I think that we had a lot of, a lot of helpful citizens along the way as well, um, so thanks, thanks to all of them. Um, you know, my, my thoughts and prayers are with the staff and the, and the folks that live there, um, that they can get, get back on their feet quickly, so.
Yeah, I, I'd apply my, I would, remember once upon a time, Phil's not here tonight. Yeah, I, I would, remember once upon a time, Phil's not here tonight, but, but I'm looking at the former chief. Remember once upon a time that we, the Sheriff's Department was going to take care of the fire, the police, and we were going to volunteer fire department? Well, I'm glad, I'm glad people with some investment in the community were wise enough to have that kind of response capability. I'm absolutely certain it made a huge difference. And the safer grant didn't hurt anything either in terms of the current staffing. So that was a, a big step that voters did to vote, to fund their safety forces. And you see that in those kinds of near misses. So we're all pretty lucky, or blessed, or good grace or something. But anyways, there were people, and they still kind of haunt civic issues that really think that we should be volunteer fire department, have the sheriff's department be our police, so. I just want to say thank you, Chief. Ms. Zier?
I'm just thinking back a little bit about what you said with Mill Creek. It's very appreciated. They have asked if anyone has any extra boxes to drop them off at Mill Creek because they're a little limited boxes. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you.
I might have a few.
Mr. Richard?
Mr. President, I know it's late, I won't say much, but I just want to make a statement about our member that had recently resigned due to health issues. As many folks notice, there's an, there's an empty chair here. Mr. Ivy, due to health reasons, had to resign very recently. I hope everyone joins me with the fact that our thoughts and prayers are with him and his family because he does have some serious health issues that he's working through. I know it's been a pleasure to work with him, even though we may disagree on various things at various times. Always found him to be a very intelligent, personable type of individual that you can talk to. And I just wanted to make a big statement comment.
Yeah, my thoughts and prayers are with him and his family as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Watkins? All favor?
Aye.
I'm going to go.